Okay, it is six thirty and I'd like to call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Student trustee Wee.
Present.
Student trustee Springborn.
Present.
Trustee Garcia.
Present.
Trustee Jin.
Present.
Trustee Greer.
Present.
Trustee Heredia.
She's coming.
She's coming. She's here. She's coming. Trustee Lanza.
Present.
And trustee Majidedi.
Present.
And board president Granger.
Present.
And trustee Heredia.
Present.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item one point six, pledge to the flag. Trustee Greer, will you lead us in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item one point seven, public comments.
Any person wishing to address the board on any open session matter of concern has been requested to complete a request to address the board of trustees card and file it with the recording secretary of the board. Prior to the start of the meeting, individuals will be called upon to speak by the presiding officer. The board cannot act on or discuss items not listed on the agenda. The secretary will call on the member of the public at this time and allow the member of the public to provide live comment. The district limits each speaker to three minutes. The district will no longer read email public comment aloud during the meeting. Jean O'Neil Opapari.
Good evening, members of the board, Chancellor Gerhardt, vice chancellors Dr. Cooks and Dr. Foster. I'm Jean O'Neil Opapari, STEM program coordinator at La Sposita College and a proud member of CLIP cohort nine. I'm here to express my gratitude and our gratitude for the continued support of the CLIP program and the professional development of classified professionals. A special thanks to Wyman Fong, Jennifer Drewley, Ozzy Deluna and Mary Arminus for providing us with a meaningful, thought-provoking, enriching experience every month. Your dedication is appreciated. When CLIP began in July of 2024 for us, for CLIP cohort nine, each of us came with different expectations and goals. I believe I speak for all of us when I say that our expectations were exceeded and our personal and professional growth was profound. One word that came up often during this year was inspiring. Thank you for inspiring a new cohort of classified professionals to embrace leadership, to be bold problem solvers, and to contribute to making the Shabon La Sposita Community College District a place where dreams are realized. Earlier today, we had the pleasure of meeting cohort ten, the largest cohort yet. The future is bright, so thank you very much.
The next speaker is Gregory Kriya.
Well, this is my one hundred and thirtieth time to be at this board meeting for Greg Reese. As you know, you guys just did, you know, justices for all, well, you know, there's a bunch of liars still in here. You got Gerhardt, you got Nicholas, you got Wagner in the back, you got Rachel Ugali. All these people still chase the lie. I'm wondering when you guys are just going to get with it and let Greg Reese have what his proper due is, is to get his purse. Why can't he get his purse? Ms. Greer, you are my constituent. I'm your constituent. I was wondering, did this gentleman over here, Gerhardt, did he ever give you any information of what goes on with Greg Reese? Because it's very important that Greg Reese gets his. He hasn't had his, can't get his purse after eighteen years. He has nineteen and a half years of service here and he can't get it. There's nobody in this room that could actually say, why don't we give it to him? Why does Gregory have to come here? Because you can't have Greg Reese here because they did a, I wish I could use the word, but they did an injunction against him. So now, next year, we'll have one year, and then he has two more years so that he can come to this corrupt college that I call college that I've worked here thirty-three years. And there's not too many people could say that. I know that Dale Wagner might be able to. It is a shame that you could continue to still, still follow this lie. Why would I be coming here? Ms. Greer, I'm asking you to call me or I could call you. I know a lot of people that know you and they really have a lot of respect for you. Jim Sabrante, and there's other people, some of the people you walk with, too, I know very well. This board has to do something about so that Greg Reese can have his proper due. Then you don't have to see me. I'd rather be home playing music than coming here for a half hour or whatever, fifteen minutes, than I'm really here. But the thing here is, he's a liar, he's a liar, and there's two people back there who are liars. And there's nobody could tell me different. I tell it to their face. Have a lie detector. Sit down with me with a lie detector with these four people in the back and in the front. I'd win. I'd kick your [BLEEP], period. I'm mad as a person to keep coming here trying to help this man. They corrupted against him. They conspired against him. Somebody said something nice about Fong. Are you kidding me? He's the worst. He's the mole. Rachel Ugali's a mole, and she belonged to SEIU ten-one. And I was in executive board. Did I ever trust her? Hell, no. I'm telling you, get this done so that Greg Reese could have his purse.
The next speaker is Larry Beal. Larry Beal.
I don't hear well. Did you call me?
Yep.
Larry Beal, a retiree from Shabon College and worked there for thirty-some-odd years. And I got this in the mail, and you have them all over campus. I'm sure you've seen these somewhere. I trust. Anyway, I noticed when I came, it said up the top here, summer fall 2025 class schedule. You go through here. There is no schedule in here. Do you understand that? I have told that to senior people and last year. And I get this at the home. This just lists classes. It's not listing a schedule. This is, ooh, can't use that word, but it is that way. It shouldn't be like that. Will you kindly, one of you in here, take a look at these and you see if you can find a schedule in there? There is none. And I like the idea, form follows function, the idea. Well, then I get to think, well, everything's online now. Well, that's good. I taught computer program and all that stuff, and online's great. But you want to help your customer find what they're looking for. If this comes to my home, eh, I'm not really old. But if I wanted to go in here and see, what class might it be at this, there's no schedule. Hello? And I want to take a computer class. And then someone says, well, scan that thing. Well, how about the old people don't know what that thing is? Wouldn't it be nice to have one of you sitting on the coffee table? So I'm kindly, kindly, asking one of you to take the time to take a look at this. This is absolutely stupid. And this is a college. We don't want to promote stupidity. But that's what's occurring. And the sad part, too, is that somebody put this together. You know what? They probably did a good job. They did it the same way they did last year. And if I wasn't here today, they'll do it the same way next year because some supervisor's not taking the time to read it. Well, you guys are the top. Take the time kindly. Form follows function. If this is the function to find a schedule, it's not there. You go in here and it's so stupid the way they did it. Here's the summer schedule, business one A, one B, expedition. Go over here, hey, for the fall time, here's business down here, business one A, one B. It's the same thing. That's stupid. That's not what we're here for. The function of a catalog, that's a different story. You put the classes in here. And who came up with the bright idea of making it twice as big as what it was before when I was going to school there? And probably when most of you were going to school was half this size. But everybody wants to make things bigger. As an example of stupidity, I had to go to the bathroom before this. A giant bathroom. It's got one urinal and one toilet. Well, you guys will be okay. But somebody's not thinking, and that's up to you folks to do, is to think. That's what education is about. And thank you. That's it. I'll leave these here for you.
That concludes public comment.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item one point eight, approval of consent items. Are there any trustees who wish to have an item removed from the consent agenda? Okay, I would like to pull item five point six, adoption of the tentative budget. If there are no other items to be pulled, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we have a first by trustee Greer, a second by trustee Heredia. Vice chancellor Drewley, I believe you have a readout.
Government Code Section five four nine five three C three, which requires that before taking final action, the board must orally report a summary of the recommendation regarding the salaries, salary schedules, or compensation paid in the form of fringe benefits of a local agency executive. Therefore, I am making the following summary regarding such items appearing on the consent agenda. Item three point three, management personnel, pertains to final action by the board regarding the approval for the following contracts of employment. Amal Issa, Dean, Academic Pathways and Student Success, Range nineteen, Step two. Michael McQuiston, Dean, Academic Services, Public Safety, Advanced Manufacturing, Transportation, Health and Kinesiology, Range nineteen, Step two. And Michelle Samotis, Dean, Academic Services, Business, Social Science and Learning Resources, Range nineteen, Step three.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other comments now that we've had the readout? Okay, seeing none. Roll call, please.
Student trustee Springborn.
Aye.
Trustee Garcia.
Aye.
Trustee Jin.
Aye.
Trustee Greer.
Aye.
Trustee Heredia.
Aye.
Trustee Lanza.
Aye.
Trustee Majidedi.
Aye.
And board president Granger.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Moving on to item one point ten, our presentation, tentative budget for twenty-five, twenty-six. Turn it over to you, chancellor.
Yes, thank you, President Granger. So as is customary this time of year, the board is getting, is to receive a presentation by Vice Chancellor Nicholas regarding the proposed tentative budget of the district for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six. So I'll hand it over to Vice Chancellor Nicholas.
Good evening. I think we're on, yeah, that's a different document? There you go. Perfect. And it worked. So thank you for the opportunity tonight to present the twenty-five, twenty-six tentative budget. Before we get started, there's a number of thank yous that I would like to throw out there and acknowledge certain people. So for the presidents, appreciate certainly, and my gratitude goes towards your business offices. They put a lot of work into this. At the district here, we have some district personnel that certainly helped shape this document. One of them's back there in the crowd right now, our budget and grants manager, Rosalie Roque. Was in a tremendous amount of work on this budget. She's really the architect behind putting it together. And then Joanne Bishop Wilber at the district office also greatly assists in the final document. So very much appreciate those individuals. And I think it is his last budget, so all, this will be the second time he gets called out tonight. Dale, in the back. I appreciate working with you. I know that your time with the district is coming to an end. But my, in my five years here, you've been very helpful and I've really enjoyed working with you. So thank you very much for all you do. So we'll start off with a state budget overview specifically looking at the May revision. So I came before this board in January and a lot of the proposals that came from Governor Newsom in January have really carried forward. There's not a whole lot of change between the January proposal and the May revision. And frankly, there probably isn't going to be a lot of change in the May revision leading up to the enacted state budget next week. It's a big budget. California total expenditure budget greater than $300 billion. Pretty good increase over last year. The general fund, another $15 billion increase at $226 billion. Probably the major change is in January, they had, the governor had produced a balanced budget. This budget is notic. It contains a $12 billion deficit. So that's really the major change financial for the state. But again, the proposals within largely remain the same. Main one that we look at is the COLA. It's being proposed at two point three percent for the community college system. It's down a tick from January, not much. But with us being in hold harmless, this status, the COLA will not change our apportionment revenue again because of the whole harmless status. And you'll hear me kind of beat that drum throughout the presentation. Yes, there's a COLA out there. No, it's not being applied to the district's apportionment revenue for this tentative budget. So the two point three million dollar budget, or two point three percent COLA again not impacting our apportionment revenue is meaning that we'll stay flat essentially at $140 million in total. So the two point three percent COLA and future COLAs that will be applied after we emerge from the whole harmless funding, which we're aiming to do as quickly as possible, probably by twenty-six, twenty-seven. It does narrow the gap, however, the COLA, because when the COLA is applied, it increases the dollars per FTES. It increases the points within the supplemental and the success metric. So just naturally, we're generating more dollars under the student-centered funding formula from that COLA. It's just not enough to get over that hold harmless threshold. So what was once a $20 million gap, we've been in hold harmless really since the inception of the student-centered funding formula. It maxed out. The high watermark was about $20 million. We've now cut that to less than $3 million under our assumptions. So we're right at the threshold of removing ourselves from hold harmless and being fully on the scale. Other proposals for the state is enrollment growth of two and three five, two point three five percent. That does not impact us as a district. We're still restoring really to our pre-COVID figures. And then, as is very common in deficit budget times, there are no one, there are no new one-time funds being proposed. A lot of times you'll see monies for deferred maintenance or we've seen certainly with COVID, the enrollment and retention recovery funds. Those are not being proposed in this budget. So with no COLA applied, the district's is projecting a tentative budget, a structural deficit of approximately $3.3 million. That deficit then will reduce the district's reserves. So the district is using reserves to cover that deficit. And the reserves under this, in the tentative budget, will be at $15.7 million or slightly above 10% of its expenditure budget. So still double-digit reserve, spending it down really in a strategic way. There's aggressive scheduling. We're looking to increase our full-time equivalent student cap, student numbers significantly from the current fiscal year. There's a big, big jump in our enrollment target for twenty-six, twenty-seven. In order to do that, we've enhanced the full-time equivalent faculty that we're putting on schedule. And as this board has been made, made aware, even the year prior to implementation of the compressed calendar, the district is implementing a winter intercession in, beginning in this December of two thousand twenty-five, which is going to again further enhance the district's ability to hit its FTES goals. Up note, that $3.3 million projected structural deficit. We're going to be using one-time funds for the winter intercession. We're still really in the feeling out stages as to the number of sections that are going to run. The demand, it's our first time doing it, so we're not fully aware of what the demand will be. But whatever we spend on winter intercession will be utilized through one-time funds, and you won't see that structural deficit increase because of that. A lot has been talked about, you know, full-time equivalent students within the student-centered funding formula make up the bulk of the dollars that are generated. But we have made, and the board's aware of significant progress really within the success and the supplemental metrics. You can see the numbers there on the Pell Grants and the Promise Grants increasing significantly year over year, 30%, 24% respectively. What this shows and how it translates into dollars is in the past fiscal year, we generated $14.9 million in the supplemental metrics. This year, we're estimated to achieve $18.6 million within the supplemental metrics largely because of those increases in Pell Grant recipients, Promise Grant recipients. And so it's not just the COLA that's helping us get out of hold harmless. We're doing a lot of internal work as well through our strategies within the supplemental particularly to remove ourselves from hold harmless. Some of the assumptions that we're using for the tentative budget, again, there's no COLA that's being added to our apportionment revenue. So we're going to be static at about $140 million. And then ironically, the COLA, if it were to be applied, would generate $3.2 million, which is really what our structural deficit is. So the, the fact that we're not getting that COLA is, is the contributor 100% to the structural deficit that the district is projecting in this tentative budget. On the expenditure side, step and columns have been built into position control. And then on the FTES, overall as a district, we're looking at just shy of 17,000 FTES. You can see the breakout there by colors. So keep in mind that almost 17,000 full-time equivalent students. What the district is budgeting for and setting a target at is really what was achieved pre-COVID. If you look at the left side of that graph for seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty, that's what the district was generating. And COVID, obviously, you'll see the steep decline. But we are rising above that and getting back to where we were. And that's where that 16,975 aims to be. We're looking to get back to our pre-COVID levels. Historically, the district has, over a multi-year period, achieved those, those targets. And we're certainly aiming to do that in twenty-five, twenty-six. And then the bulk of the district's expenditure budget is within personnel. Eighty-five plus percent of our budget goes towards the salaries and benefits of the employees within the district. So point out that within the unrestricted fund, it's, it's flat year over year. We're not, we haven't been adding positions to position control. Anytime there's a little bit of shift like that, it's typical that it's just a funding source change. So a position that may have been partially funded on unrestricted, or excuse me, unrestricted dollars, those restricted dollars may no longer be available. So there's a shift towards the unrestricted. Of note is $5.4 million in budgeted vacant positions. So that's built in to the budget. It's contributing to that $3.3 million structural deficit. And so to the, any extent that those are not filled, those budgeted vacant positions, that will just help alleviate any expenditure pressures that are contributing to structural deficit within the budget. So I talked earlier, there wasn't a lot of change in January from to May. There's not going to be a lot of change from May to the adoption budget, which the board will see in September. Just a few things around the edges. Property and liability insurance, largely because of cyber and the wildfires, contributed to about a 15% increase in our year-over-year costs for that. And then I just found it interesting, and I used ChatGPT to verify this. This is the first rate decrease in 20 years that PERS is experiencing. So right now, fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, we're paying a tick over 27% on the employer side. It will decrease to 26.81. Again, the first time in 20 years that there has been a rate decrease in PERS. Also like to point out, the district's investment in its retiree obligations. We incepted a OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefit Trust, in June of 21 with that initial $1 million deposit. It currently has a balance of 17-plus million dollars. So we've seen great growth in that, and the district's been committed to continuing those contributions. We've had a greater than 9% return over the last rolling 12 months, net of fees. So it, short, short way of saying it's doing what it's supposed to do, that trust. And then the next steps, again, the adoption budget by law has to be presented to the board by September fifteenth. So that's partly, or probably the main reason why your September meeting's a little different than others. And we'll, as always, keep the board apprised of any significant changes that occur at the state level between now and adoption. We'll know what the state enacted budget is, you know, in the coming days. All of those, any changes that could occur will be incorporated in the next document, the final adoption budget that you will see. Any questions?
I will open it up to the board. Trustee Lanza.
Hi, thank you, and thank you for all the hard work that went in preparing the budget. Always a believer, budgets are indicative of our priorities, right? So a couple of questions on it. Yeah, I did get the $3 million deficit versus the $3 million lack of funding, if you will, for the COLA. But did I understand the enrollment growth funding that went out to the community college general? Two point three percent of the total budget? So it would have been another $3 million?
If we were to achieve it, sure. So the way that, there's certain layers that come into play before a district hits growth. So we still have what's called restorative FTES that we can get. So that's FTES that technically is not growth, wouldn't be part of that two point three five percent. But it's FTES that we can recapture within a certain period of time. It's for districts that experience shifts year to year that creates a stability mechanism for the district. So the two point three five percent growth would be above any restoring that we would do. And at that 16,975 level, we still would not be hitting the growth funding available.
So, over. And this is probably an unfair question, but.
I like unfair question.
I don't think chat will help you with this one. But when you look at the, the FT, our full-time employees, our equivalent employees now, or is it going to next year versus where we were when we're back at 17,000 full-time equivalent students? Are we similar?
I believe we are. I, I, I'm speaking in caveats right now because I would have to go back and check at position control. The, the.
Can you speak clearly? It's not what I expected off the top of your head.
No, I, I think it's, it's close to where we were seventeen, eighteen. I would say that there was a reduction, certainly. I would say that there was a reduction, certainly, in the past few years, but it was more, it was, it was a reduction of employees on the unrestricted fund. As an example, we got a lot of federal COVID dollars. We moved our campus safety and security costs to that. When those went away, it migrated, those costs migrated back to the unrestricted fund. So the, the change in the unrestricted fund may fluctuate more than the change in the overall employees within the district, regardless of funding source, if that makes sense.
Yeah. Thank you.
Trustee Heredia.
I know there is, this is fluid, but any information on the federal funding changes and the impact on our district?
Yeah, we've, we've looked at, at those. So the, the, there's certainly talk about changing the Pell Grant in terms of the maximum awards. I think they were looking at that as some cost savings and a potential tax bill reconciliation. I, I don't know where that, the status is on that particular component of the federal funding, but we are certainly recipients of federal grants. Trio grant of both institutions have personnel that are attached to the federal funding that we receive. A lot of those have been in the news, certainly as potentially being looked at for reductions or just frankly being gotten rid of entirely. We have not, to my knowledge, appeared on any of the lists of districts or colleges that have received letters from the federal government saying that that funding is going to be sunsetting. So long way to answer your question, we haven't received anything, and we're not planning at this time for those dollars to, to go away.
Trustee Moja Didi.
First, thank you Vice Chancellor Nicholas and your team for preparing this, this budget and going through this budget process. I can imagine, well, first, just appreciate you and your team, given the sort of erratic nature of just, you know, instability with regulatory affairs, I'm sure at the federal level and even at the state level this year, with just like, you know, wildfires and just sort of the continuous state of our budget. So just appreciate your steadfast, steadfastness in preparing this budget. First question I had is, does this budget include additional transfers to the irrevocable trust?
Yes. So the, the district within this budget is planning a $3 million transfer out of its self-insurance fund, which is used to pay for retiree liabilities and where we've always made those transfers before. So yes. And to your point, it's, it's important to do that from a fiscal standpoint, certainly, and to honor the commitments that we've made to current and former employees. But practically, also, it is imperative that districts continue to make those contributions in order to benefit from the actuary and the auditors recognizing a higher investment rate of return, which substantially lowers the liability overall.
Thank you. I just have one more question, too. And I, I know in one of the slides I had mentioned sort of the funded vacant positions that we have, do you anticipate that the structural deficit will be lower than forecasted by the end of the year?
Yeah, I think most likely. There's, there's certainly a heightened scrutiny about filling vacant positions with that structural deficit being in place at this point. And we're going to be aggressive in our scheduling. So we, we have very high productivity that is occurring right now. We want to continue that trend. As an example, summer right now is looking to be about 15% increase over the prior summer, with productivity being really the highest I've seen in the five years since I've been here. Those are all good trends, and we want to continue to make those investments to generate more students. The more we do, the sooner we're going to get off hold harmless.
Those are all the questions I have. And again, just thank you again, Vice Chancellor Nicholas and your team for just making this such a, it's, it just is always so cogent, and just, I really appreciate your leadership.
Appreciate it.
Okay, trustee Garcia.
Thank you, Jonah, and all staff, because it really, I mean, it, I think your report today represents kind of the amalgamated work of everyone coming together on the areas that has, you know, caused us to have such increases in enrollment, really meaning the needs of our students. My question is, and so as, as I'm understanding it, actually, we would be going through this deficit period of this year, recognizing that our enrollment trends are showing very favorable progress, and that it would allow us to then be in a much healthier spot come '26, '27. What would be the expected, if trends continue as they are, what would be the expected, I guess, revenue having not been in hold harmless anymore?
Yes, that's a good question. So really, the, point back to the district receives about $140 million in apportionment revenue. We're through the SCIF generating about $137 million. So again, very, very close. We got a 2.3% COLA that's projected for this year. That, that has helped close that gap considerably. So even a very nominal COLA, all else being equal, 1%, 2% next year, would, just by itself, if everything else held constant, get the district off of hold harmless. So I think to, to your point, I think in '26, '27, it is, it would be likely that the district would budget the, the entirety of whatever COLA that the state would put on, assuming that we had, or come close to the enrollment targets that we're, we're looking for in '25, '26.
Thank you. That's all my questions.
Trustee Jen.
Vice Chancellor Nicholas, thank you for your excellent report, very clear. I have a question regarding the post-employment benefit trust. It's a huge increase in matter of few years, from 1 million to 17.2 million. How did that happen? Do we expect that to continue on the next few years?
It happened by design. Thank God. So the district has identified, really, through the, the funds that had previously existed prior to the trust within the self-insurance fund, had made some contributions. We talked about the $1 million inception. We've made probably at least $12 million in contributions to that trust over the past three and a half years. So it's not certainly a million dollars that has, you know, through market forces gained to 17. We've made a lot of contributions throughout those years. But it, it's just a dedication of looking for, really, the strategy is looking for one-time resources as they come in and diverting those resources as, as you can, towards funding these long-term liabilities. That's really always been the, the approach that, that I've taken, is particularly if you're doing a year-end close and, you know, things, maybe you're looking a little bit better than you had anticipated, maybe it's good to take some of those unanticipated savings and put them into the long-term liability trust. So that's, that's really been the, the, the strategy, is, it's a big number we got to hit, 100-plus million dollars in liabilities. But again, we started with one, we're at 17 now. Talk to me in five years, we'll be, we'll be a lot closer.
Okay, anybody else? All right. So I, I do want to echo my appreciation for the work going into this as well. And also just want to add, when, when I see these presentations, I'm always reminded that these numbers tell a story. And I, I think you did a great job highlighting the work that has been done by our classified professionals, our faculty, and our administration to really address the elements that the SCIF is rewarding in supporting our students in meeting those goals that has got us from a $20 million gap to 3.3 million in a few years. So what we were looking at just a few years ago was a much bigger hurdle than we have now. So I just want to recognize the hard work of everybody that has been happening to get us to this point. I also just want, I'm always thinking, I'm thinking about OPEB and, you know, our honoring our commitments, as you said, and I appreciate that. And so I just want to have that reminder. How much is that unfunded liability for our OPEB?
The total liability is about $169.
Yeah, so we have some work to do. And, and I appreciate the consistent dedication to making that happen. I also want to be clear that my understanding is accurate, that any of the uncertainty with federal funding, be it Pell Grants or programs, is not accounted for in this budget because we don't do a tentative budget on potential changes. We go with what is known, right?
That is accurate.
Yes. So I, so I do appreciate the conservative nature of the budget, giving all the unknown that's coming our way. And, and I do hope that the uncertainty at the federal level comes to a conclusion soon, and then we can begin to really fill those vacant positions as quickly as possible because we'll be on more solid ground as to where we're going to be financially in this upcoming year. So with that, thank you so much for your presentation. Okay, now that that is done, I would, a motion would be in order to approve this item 5.6 that was pulled from the agenda, our tentative budget. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
And I'll make a second.
We have a first by trustee Moja Didi and a second by trustee Greer. Any other questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Student trustee Wee.
Aye.
Student trustee Springborn.
Aye.
Trustee Garcia.
Aye.
Trustee Jen.
Aye.
Trustee Greer.
Aye.
Trustee Heredia.
Aye.
Trustee Lanza.
Aye.
Trustee Moja Didi.
Aye.
And Board President Granger.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Moving on to item 1.11, presentation, our marketing update. Chancellor?
Yes, thank you, President Granger. So this evening is also our annual update to the board of, really, our marketing efforts underway across the district. And to leave this presentation, going to hand it over to Director Ramos.
All right, good evening. Thank you, President Granger, trustees, and distinguished guests. My name is Dionisia Ramos, and I serve as the Director of PR, Marketing, and Government Relations. So I want to thank you for the opportunity to share an update on our marketing initiatives. In my presentation today, I'm going to cover four main areas: branding, marketing, public relations, and then our efforts to support holistic enrollment management. But before I get started, I want to briefly introduce three members of the PR and G team. They are here behind me, Adelina Elo, Bryn Lux, and Chip Warner. A lot of the work that I'm going to talk to you about today is a result of their hard work, and so I wanted to give them due credit before I get started. And I'm going to start first, as I said, with branding and how we elevate our, our identity. Branding is really an opportunity, oops, I got ahead of myself. Branding is an opportunity that we have to create a unique identity, and it really allows us to shape how students and the community perceives us, and then to really foster an emotional connection with our colleges. So not only do we establish that recognizable visual identity, but, but, so you'll see a little bit about that in these next two slides. The directors, the aforementioned director, directors have been doing a lot of work on this. So I want to spend a little bit of time on this with you. So I'll start first with Chabot. Chabot embarked on a bit of a mini rebrand, and you see the results of that here. What prompted that was that they really felt like they didn't have consistency in how they expressed their brand. So they did some surveying, they did focus groups to inform their efforts, and what they heard was that students and the community really wanted to have the brand expressed in a way that honored Chabot's history, their diversity, but then also give it kind of a fresh update. You see their midnight merch drop there on the right-hand side. So everything you see here, the graphics, the font, the colors, it tells a story based on a lot of the information that they receive from the research that they do. The Chabot College Gladiator. So the Gladiator is their mascot, and that had a little bit of a refresh as well. They needed to have a more of a three-dimensional look in order for better rendering across different uses. They wanted to have a really strong stance. People really felt like they needed, the Gladiator needed to be more representative of all students. And so you see that in a lot of the work that they did here. Las Positas College similarly assessed their look. They expanded their color palette to give them a little bit more flexibility with design. They did some, you know, student giveaways. They looked to see how they could be, again, relaxed, a little bit informal, a little bit fun. But really, if you look across a lot of the design that they did, it was really for that consistency and to be able to express themselves in a really uniform way to the community. They have also very much leaned into their top college ranking, and I think we've been writing that for a few years as well. But both colleges have really tried to elevate their look to be very collegiate, and I think that they have achieved that. So I'll transition a little bit now to how we market our colleges. And we work with an insights agency to do our annual market research, which we do every year, just to get a sense of where some of our students are, some of their perceptions. So this year, we had an actual higher participation rate than the last year. We're really pleased with that. You see here in the two pie charts, the respondents really reflect the, the demographics of our districts. So on the left-hand side, respondents by campus, the campus that they primarily associate with, and then on the right-hand side, by key student groups. I won't go into all of the detail that we heard in that, in, in the survey, but there's a lot that we break down as we look to use this information. The survey was briefed by design because we really wanted everyone to complete it. We wanted to have a high completion rate. But we asked a lot of information about communication preferences. We asked about what drives their decision to enroll, who influences their decisions, a lot of information, media preferences. So here are some of the key takeaways. Referrals and word of mouth continue to be really important and a key means of how students discover our colleges and our district, with friends, family, school, and staff being important influencers. Convenience, so proximity and affordability, still strong drivers for why students choose our colleges. With media preferences, YouTube and Instagram, we know that those are really important platforms for our community, and that's just really important for us to know because it informs our strategy with our advertising and our ad buys. Contrary to popular belief, students are telling us that they actually frequently check their email, and that they prefer zone mail, which is the district-issued email. So that, again, is going to be important information for us as we look to build out more communication plans. We also surprisingly heard that students are not yet sick of how much we text them. So we have room to grow with texting, they're not sick of us yet. But we did get some really clear insights into if we are going to grow our texting campaigns, how we do so strategically to be much more effective. And then we learned that students are actually really satisfied with their experiences at our colleges, and primarily the reasons why they're satisfied is their interactions with staff and with faculty. So props to the colleges for creating that environment. We did something new with one of the questions in the survey this year, is we asked a question that we've never asked before, to try and get something called the Net Promoter Score. The NPS is a metric that organizations and companies use to measure brand loyalty or to measure just how likely their customers are to recommend a product, an organization. So in our case, how likely are our promoters to recommend our colleges to others? So you see that represented here. The responses are based on a scale of zero to 10, with respondents, based on their response, categorized as promoters, passives, or detractors. The scoring ranges from negative 100 to 100. So we actually ended up with a net- So we actually ended up with a Net Promoter Score of 48, which is pretty good. We do look at benchmark data that's specific to the education industry because it does differ from industry to industry. And so just given how important word of mouth is, we feel really good about our Net Promoter Score and the percentage of promoters that we have. Winner-intercession. We asked a few questions about winner-intercession because we don't really have any baseline data. This is the first time we are embarking on winner-intercession. It's the first time our team is looking to go out and advertise and promote winner-intercession. So what we asked in one of the survey questions, how likely are you to enroll? So here's some of the information we got. In purple, those who said yes, they're likely to enroll, indicated that really it's about convenience and availability of an online schedule that would get them to enroll. For those who said that they likely would not, it was more about fear of workload or that they just needed a break between sessions. But then we also have some room that I don't know, they're in teal, they can be persuaded. They wanted to know that they might have a flexible schedule or a clear path to whatever their end goal was. So this is important information for us because we're looking at how we can build the most persuasive argument for why winner-intercession is something they should consider. So we collect a lot of information, and then what do we do with that? We have to then create the briefest of ads, sometimes 15 seconds, or just a really clear, uncluttered, static ad like the sides of buses or at the mall. And so what you see here is we use a lot of the information that we get to promote the ability to transfer to other four-year colleges, the financial assistance that we provide, the affordability of our programs, all of that, and we feature our own students, which we hear over and over again is something that students really gravitate to. So we measure success because the media landscape changes quite often, and so we do take a look at end-of-campaign reports. After every campaign, we try and take a look at how effective our campaigns have been. So for spring 2025, just as an example, our campaign served over 2.7 million ads across all platforms, and it led to just under 88,000 qualified clicks to the landing pages that we work with the colleges to create. We create those so that we can track information like this. So we get a sense of which of our platforms are really performing well. Thankfully, we perform mostly above industry average, and we do have benchmarks for higher ed. When we don't perform above average for any of our platforms, we do reduce our spend on those platforms or sometimes eliminate them altogether. We're also always testing new platforms. So in this last year, we advertised on Twitch and Hulu, which are two streaming services, and those performed really well. We look at key performance indicators. So how many calls did our ads generate? How many click-through rates? Did people watch the video all the way through? So we have video completion rates to see how everything is performing. We are quite proud of the class schedule that we put out. We work with the colleges on these class schedules, and we think they look pretty good, but you don't have to trust us this year in a statewide conference. Chabot College and LPC won an award, first and second place respectively, for the look and design of their class schedules. We take this work really seriously because we know it's a big investment and because we know it can be the difference between someone deciding that they want to look into more whether they want to take a class, whether they're interested in a program. So a lot of information goes into how we design these, but 157,000 copies go out to the Chabot service area twice a year, about 87,000 copies for the LPC service area. And so this for us is a real opportunity to get information out about our programs. All right, so now I'm going to talk about how we reinforce our brand through storytelling, and I'll touch really quickly on social media and news media engagement. So first, social media. We focused a lot of our efforts in this last year on video. And, you know, behind each 10-second video is developing the content ideas, finding the students who are going to star in our videos. It's the filming, it's the post-production work. And so, you know, why would we do this for a 15-second video? Well, if you can see from some of the views of the videos that I selected here, just as an example, we get a lot of engagement of video. I mean, video is king. And so that's what we're trying to get ourselves into as well and make sure that we're telling a story through our social media channels. We also have made a really concerted effort to ensure that students are participating both behind the scenes and in front of the camera. We even get sometimes college presidents to participate from time to time. That's really popular. And, you know, students tell us that this is where they spend their time. We know we have an audience there, and so we want to take advantage and be able to share important information on those platforms. So here, just a quick look at our reach on just three of the platforms that we manage. We do develop content for nine total accounts that we manage. We have made an effort over the last year to grow our followers, and so as you can see, we were able to do that 43% over the last year on Instagram, which is one of our strongest platforms. And media engagement, it's such an important part of our PR strategy. We write articles, we send out press releases to pitch stories, we build relationships with reporters, all with the hope that they will write a story about us or let us publish our own article. And so in the last year, we've written about 50 press releases and gotten just under 200 positive news mentions across print and television. Separately, we also work with a consultant who covers all of our athletic programs, big and small, across both campuses, and his work has resulted in just about over 180 articles and social media posts over the last year, again, covering athletics and working really closely with the colleges and our athletic directors. All right, I'm going to end talking a bit about holistic enrollment management. We support this work through communications because we know that it supports recruitment and retention efforts. And so I talked to you last year when I was here a bit about CRM Recruit. This is the tool that tracks and communicates with students from the inquiry stage to the registration phase. And right now, we are, the tool is undergoing some technical upgrades, but in the meantime, we've been working with functional users at colleges, mostly student services staff, to really try and figure out what kind of data fields we should be making sure we are capturing, what kind of data are we capturing? And it's particularly, I think, important for prior to us having information from when students apply. When they apply, we get a lot of information from that application. But if they're just coming to an event or just inquiring, coming to the website, we right now don't really have a way of capturing that data and moving them along the enrollment funnel. And so that's the important work that's happening right now. CRM Advise is the tool that's allowing us to track and communicate with students from registration to completion. And so we've spent quite a bit of work in the last year on this because this is live, being used, and it's currently actually in phase two, which is pretty heavily looking at communications. In fall of 2024, we have already started to send out communications through this tool, communications that are targeted and personalized to students where they are in their journey. And so we're looking to move the needle on some really key areas like SEP completion, applying for financial aid if students haven't done that, introducing them to guided pathways, reminding them when it's time to register for classes. So all of that work is continuing, and we're hoping that in the fall, we are going to have five new messages configured and ready to go out to students. And that's important because we're really looking to work across the district, across departments, to really have the student experience in mind, to schedule communications in a timing where the colleges are able to respond to the support that they're going to need at that time, and in a way where we're not overwhelming them. Again, information we get from the surveys that tell us, you know, how we should be communicating to them to be most effective. So there's so much more I could tell you, but I want to keep within my time, so I am going to thank you for your time and welcome any questions you have for me.
Okay. We'll start with trustee Mojadidi.
Yeah, Director Ramos, thank you for this presentation and your leadership and your team's leadership. It is, I'm just so impressed with your team's dedication and this rebrand and how it translates into retention for our students. And, you know, first, I want to be on the record of also saying that I too love our course catalog. I think it's great. I would say, first, like, you know, sort of anecdotally, I had the chance to attend the night market event at Chabot College about a month ago, and the first thing that caught my attention was just how many students had Chabot College swag on. And it was just, it just was so apparent, like, whether it was family members, community members there, like, it was just so apparent in a way that I maybe haven't noticed before. So just really, just huge, just thank you on that effort. I think all of what you've shown in this data, I think, has translated into being able to really engage with a new generation of student, like, it's, I'm talking not even the Gen Z generation, but this new Gen Alpha generation, which makes me feel so old. But the way that you're able to communicate and really create a comprehensive student experience, and you had mentioned student experience, and like, with all of this branding and marketing, it's not just helping with, you know, enrollment, but it's really, again, helping create a sense of pride in both of our campuses and our college district as a campus, as a community. And so I just really appreciate that. And I know, and I'm going to get to the question, I'm going to be almost done with my platitudes. So I just, again, really appreciate the through line to how this helps with the holistic enrollment path. But I also wanted to note that not only does this marketing and your team's leadership on, you know, all the different social media platforms, not only does it help with the enrollment, but I truly believe it helps with that retention, and it helps our students get to that next step, whether it's transferring to that, to that four-year university, whether it's getting that certificate. So really, like, I don't want, I want to underscore how important your efforts are to the holistic student experience and the retention that is so, so crucial in student success outcomes. And I know a large part of your work and your team's leadership really is strategy, like, what is the best strategy? And so what changes, if any, will you be making to the communication strategy based on the information that you've collected and the various survey results and just like what your team sort of captures on the daily, on the different social media platforms, but in just general, just because I know that, like, there's all that data and strategy is like a huge component of the work.
Yeah, well, thank you for your comments and thank you for the question. So we get a little bit giddy when we hear that students do check their email a lot and that they're checking theirs on mail account because we've talked a lot about, do they check their email? Is it effective? And so we do learn a lot through that process. And so some of what we've learned is even though students are receiving the message and reading the message, email is maybe not necessarily where they're going to engage. And we see that in the open rates and click-through rates. We might have great open rates of our emails, and then the click-through rates drop off. And so we've learned a lot about just how brief we have to make our messages, how focused we have to make them. So, you know, if we want students to take five steps, we probably need to take it one step at a time, send them one place, and then once they've taken that action, go back and redirect them and re-guide them to that next step. So it feels really specific, but this is kind of the work that we're working in right now, is just working with the colleges to figure out what is the next step for the student? How do we communicate that? How do we schedule it? I mean, down to the day, making sure that on the day that we schedule it, that those are the days that, for example, if we're sending them to counseling, the counselors are going to be ready to take that intake of students who are all going to come and say, all right, I need an SEP because I got this email. And if they get a, well, counselors aren't available, then, you know, we didn't do great planning. So some of that is the planning that we're doing. I mentioned a little bit about the texting. There's a lot of work to be done with texting because it's so complicated. Some of the information that we got in the survey is that students want to be texted about this, but maybe not that. Students who are certificate students responded differently than students who are transfer students. And so how do we take all of that information, not treat all students the same, but really give them, think about our opt-in and our opt-out strategy for texting, because once they opt out, they opt out, and then we miss that opportunity. So that's some of the work that we're doing, is just really trying to take that information and figure out how do we make that actionable in some of the work we're doing with CRM Recruit and Advise.
No, thank you, and I love that sort of approach, that with different student populations and different programs, like, it does really necessitate a different strategy. You know, I'll be mindful of my time, and I'll yield back.
Okay, trustee Greer.
Thank you, Director Ramos. That was a really good presentation, and I saw marketing from a recruitment perspective, but what I really saw here was the retention piece, especially when you're with the transition, like, with Chabot, just the mascot, not really thinking, what does it matter if this Gladiator looks like this, but just sort of creating a sense of belonging and sort of like, that's our mascot. So first question is, did anything about the survey surprise you? Did you expect an outcome? A lot of times, you know this area, that you would get certain answers, and then you were like, wow, I didn't expect.
You know, I would say a surprise, only because we'd never asked it before, is regarding the Net Promoter Score. We just weren't sure. I mean, sometimes you feel like you hear, it's like the Yelp reviews, right? You hear other really negative stuff. So we were really surprised, pleasantly surprised, to have a really high promoter rate because we really feel like we can lean into that. So if we know that students are really satisfied, and then we also know that prospective students are listening to older siblings, they're listening to cousins or other alumni, we have an opportunity there. So we've been trying to really look at, how do we elevate the stories of alumni, of current students, so that they can be the ambassadors of carrying the message that we want to carry? So we've been doing that in the class schedule. You see their stories. We try and do a lot of that around graduation, which is that feel-good time, people are completing, and it's an opportunity to reflect on the time that they've had, and it's an opportunity when families come together. So we've just been really thinking about how are we going to utilize other ambassadors to tell our stories? So I would say that Net Promoter Score for us was like a great surprise for us in there. I would also say that another surprise was I was expecting to hear that students just didn't want us to text them anymore because we could be more coordinated and strategizing, you know, how we engage texting with campaigns. So I thought for sure that we were going to hear, no more, please don't text us anymore. So exciting to hear that there's room for more communication in that area, as long as we're being strategic and listening to how students want to receive it.
Right, I found the detractors number small.
Very small.
Really small.
Yes, yeah, surprising and great news.
And then with so many options for paid advertising, can you share a little bit of how you landed at your current place?
Yeah, it's a little bit of looking at all the things that we shared, which is the survey, talking to students just informally, doing focus groups, the end-of-campaign reports. But there is an element of it where we're also just testing a little bit. We did an A/B test with our visual assets in the fall to look at what we wanted to do in the spring. We had a campaign that was designed around a much more kind of traditional collegiate look, and then we had what you see right now on the buses, which is, looks a little bit like a social media, like an Instagram post, and that was our more playful, informal look. And we put it out and marketed at the same time. This is just a digital A/B testing that we did. And for one of the colleges, for LPC, it was more, they tested more or less the same. So we didn't have a big preference for Chabot. Overwhelmingly, the kind of more informal, playful one was much more successful, and so we went with that. And so that's just one of the things that we're just kind of looking at. So some of it is really informed. Like I said, the Twitch and Hulu, we just said, we see national trends, that those are working, the platforms, you know, those are popular platforms. Let's see how it's going to work for us. We went out in spring with both of those, and they were highly successful, so we're going to continue them. So it's a little bit of both.
Yeah, and thanks for all the work you guys do.
Thank you.
Are there trustees, trustee Lanza? The trustees, trustee Lanza.
So while there's no direct, direct link that we can show that talks about the incredible progress on our student population over the last two years, marketing is a component of it. And so I want to just recognize the, your share of, of a lot of work from a lot of people, but your share of getting us to that 16, 950, I think was Jonah's number, for this coming year of full-time equivalent students, and how critical that is. And thank you, and your team. If anybody's wondering, the three in there, plus you, that is the whole team, right?
That's the team.
Yeah. Incredible job, and thank you for all of the hard work for that. Now, I'm always thinking ahead, so as we go into next year, and Jonas let us down, you know, this understanding that we're really close to getting off the hold harmless, and we started thinking about additional things. And this is a question, sorry, that I never thought to ask you before. And I think about workforce development and all the apprenticeship work that were going on. How does that build into your community? Because there's incredible work you're doing there, too. You know, the district is doing there, too. How does that build into your strategy?
Yeah, and actually, you know, so today, I focused most of my presentation on the work we do specifically with the colleges, on the very big brand awareness campaigns and enrollment campaigns. But we also end up doing a lot of micro campaigns, and that didn't really feature in today's presentation, presentation just because of time. But we work quite often with Etsy. And so we have done some campaigns to write, you know, pitch specific stories about apprenticeship programs, about ways in which we're working with industry partners. And so I think it's really important, because I think we are also getting to, first, I showed the graph of how we have different student types. And for some student types, the messaging about the ability to go right from graduation into finding a job, to having a connection to industry partners, that is important, and that is an important reason why they choose our colleges. And so when we're able to do these more targeted advertisements as part of our strategy, we definitely look at that and try and figure out, how do we promote all of this great work that is happening? So that is part of our strategy, but I would agree with you that it probably needs to be a lot more of our strategy. So it's definitely top of mind. Yeah, thanks.
Student trustee Springboard.
First of all, great job on the presentation and good job to your team. This is gonna be more of a comment. I was actually one of the 1,512 students to take this survey, and I checked my email, and that's how I took it. And guys, don't worry, I did say I was extremely satisfied.
You're officially a promoter.
Yes. I just really loved seeing, I guess, your process and like your plan for the marketing. I know specifically about the Los Pecitas merch. I have those stickers, I have them in my water bottle, and I would love to see, like, clothing for us, because I know Chabot has clothing. I would, I would wear a Los Pecitas sweater. And I'm also really interested in the winter intercession. I think what's also important, though, is like, I know a lot of students, obviously, spring and fall are very important, and I wouldn't want to make the winter intercession like, I guess, like a requirement. I think it's really nice as an option for like, where students like me who like to class max can take, you know, extra classes if they want to. And I'm really excited to see where that goes. But overall, I guess I'm just really excited to see, like, this marketing and how it plays out.
Thank you. Thanks for your comment.
Okay, trustee Heredia.
Thank you for the presentation. Great job. I had a question about what strategies on targeting specific organizations to recruit prospective students. I think you mentioned some ideas, or I know there is a lot of efforts in different directions, and I just wonder how it's all coordinated.
Yeah, and by specific organizations, do you mean also like working with K-12, for example?
K-12, nonprofits, government agencies.
Yeah.
Business.
Yeah, so I didn't touch on it in my presentation, but as a district, we definitely are very engaged with our elected officials, with community organizations, in particular with chambers of commerce, where we attend a lot of events. We have a strong presence there. We bring our materials, we try and let them know a lot about what we're doing. With K-12, I think this is a big opportunity that we have. I think a couple of years ago, when I presented here, I talked a bit about how we had done a survey at that point with counselors in high schools to try and get a sense of, we know that they are, they can be promoters or detractors, and so we wanted to get a sense from them of what was behind their decision to either promote our colleges to our students or not. So some of the information that we're looking at is, you know, how do we, how do we engage with those influencers and make them be ambassadors, because students really trust, you know, their, their decision-making and their referrals to us? So with K-12, I think we have a great opportunity, and we're looking at what kind of materials we can build out, so that outreach can bring those materials. So again, carrying that same message, but understanding that we have, we do have information that says that, you know, those high school students are right now more likely to be the ones who are looking to transfer. And so some of the materials that we would bring to them are the, the materials that have information about transfer guarantees to Florida colleges and universities, that that's part of what we can provide, how we're a smart choice for students, not just a backup choice, but we can actually be a strategic choice if they're looking to go to a specific college and to a specific program. So, yeah, I think there's a lot that we're doing already, but definitely more in the K-12 space that we can be doing, for sure. Thank you.
Trustee Jen.
Thank you. Director Ramos, your report is always positive, and you can always expect that each time you step forward to the podium. I'd like to thank your staff, your two staff members in the back, your certainly cheerleaders, not just for the colleges, but for our district. Quick question, how often are those banners in front of the colleges changed?
Not enough.
Okay, because after a while, you don't notice them any longer.
Yep.
When they first went up, we all say, wow, I know that's huge, and so forth. But so, anyway, that's one area. And how often are QR codes used on your bus, on buses and so forth?
Yeah.
I mean, there's so many times I would like to just do this, you know, when I'm waiting behind the bus, rather than trying to copy stuff. I don't, but anyway, that's one thing. Media relations, I'm not surprised you're not getting a whole lot of react or responses from them, because newspapers these days just aren't what they're used to be. They're often expensive to subscribe if you want hard copies, and everyone's online if they want a copy. So, so that's not a major surprise to me, that your reactions or responses from them are on a minimal. I think you guys are very good, you have a pulse on students and our respective students. Keep up the good work. I look forward each year to your report. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we, I don't have the information in front of me on the QR codes, but I know I can tell you that we do QR codes on campus, too, to try, when we do sandwich boards or digital signs. And we, we do see less than what we expected in terms of engagement with those. And so something to look into a little bit more. We use them often as a secondary measure, so we do publish the vanity URL, something that someone's gonna remember alongside a QR code, because we also know that for some people, they're really used to doing that, used to using it, they're really comfortable, and other people are not, so we're trying to give both choices. And I would say, just in response to newspapers, I would agree that, I think sometimes that's regional in the Tri-Belly area, we actually get great coverage. It's much harder in the Chabot service area, because we don't have that same level of community papers and that same sense of there's a region, it's just the East Bay. And the East Bay Times has been really hard to get into ever since the Hayward Review went away, the Oakland Tribune, and some of these other papers. But nonetheless, we, we do have great relationships with reporters, and reporters from the East Bay Times in the last year have covered our campuses. So, you know, we keep working on that.
And I'm sure trustee Jen meant to appreciate that ginormous team of four. Not three. Any other trustees? Okay, I'll just add, you know, again, I just want to appreciate the work of the team. And when I look at what you presented tonight, and then with the questions, all the additional work that is done, that was, you weren't able to discuss, it was pretty amazing what this small group is able to do. You know how much I love the Invest in You. So, so happy to see that. But I have to say, you know, looking at this, I do like forge your future and dream big. So, you know, I loved seeing that on there, too. So, you know, I might be swayed on some other stuff, if I have a vote on anything. And I just, also, I just really want to highlight how much I appreciate your efforts on the CRM Recruit and the CRM Advise, because I can only imagine the amount of work that is needed to set up those systems. And so that's a very big lift, and I anticipate it'll bring great results, because we'll have more information on how to really meet the needs of our students and where we can find them and continue to reach out to them to help with our retention and enrollment. So thank you very much for your work.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we are moving on to item 2.0, Reports From Our Faculty Classified and Student Senate. So, looks like we're gonna jump right into our classified Senate. Why don't we start with LPC, Maria Glidden, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Those are great presentations, by the way. So I just want to highlight a few things that we, that have happened over the last month or so. We're excited to celebrate the first newsletter that was created by Amanda Inglod with Special Program. She's the coordinator of CalWorks and NextUp. And so we honored the month of May as foster care awareness, foster youth awareness, and she created the first-ever newsletter, which highlighted the services that are provided to our students. And then we ended with a profile of one of our former foster youth have moved on and graduated, so we're extremely proud of that. On May 14th, we had the first annual Chicano Education, I'm sorry, Chicano-Latino graduation that was hosted by the Chicano Education Latino Association. I would like to say it went off with a hitch, but it didn't. We had some issues with power, power outage, but despite the fact that the majority of the celebration went through without a hitch, the students were extremely happy and celebratory with their parents. It was a very nice event. Want to acknowledge that it's Pride Month, so want to be able to honor and celebrate the LGBTQ+ community, recognizing the importance of inclusion, love, and equity for all. We'd like to continue to support and uplift one another. A big thank you to the Academic Senate, especially Ashley McHale, Catherine Suarez, Valerie Connors, and Colleen Tomoto for their hard work and thoughtfulness in organizing the Classified Appreciation Event that occurred on May 14th as well. And then we want to extend our deepest gratitude, the incredible M&amp;O for all, all that they did, for all the productions that were happening over the course of the term. The amazing staff. Let's see, we created something during the spring term that we're gonna, that's gonna segue into the summer for classified staff to take, we call him the Take Five. It's just a short, five-minute break. We know that everybody's busy working hard, but we just kind of provide some snacks and essentials and a place for people to come and just literally five minutes, if that's all you have, you come, you check in, you say hi, the staff seems to enjoy it. And lastly, we just want to highlight some of the commitments through Caring Campus, which is to create a list of employees who can communicate in other languages, listen to our students by acknowledging diverse experiences, being culturally aware, practicing empathy, encouraging inclusive participation, and being mindful of power dynamics, and expand our commitment to cross-departmental awareness by collaborating and learning more about our resources. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to Chabot, Virginia Criswell.
Good evening. Happy Juneteenth and Pride Month. Last week was Classified Appreciation Week. This is a week put on by Classified for Classified, just having us being in community with one another. Some of our events of the week were wellness walks, ice cream and karaoke, a kickball game and a scavenger hunt. We kicked off the week with Donuts and Coffee sponsored by SEIU, and we closed out the week with the luncheon sponsored by Administrators. I would like to welcome and congratulate Amanda Issa as the incoming dean of Academic Pathways and Student Success. And thank you to Dr. Brian Osberger for his time as interim dean for the past nine months. I would also like to introduce Thomas Dowry. He is our incoming Classified Senate President. You may have heard Thomas's name mentioned over the past few years. He received our first-ever Rising Star Award. He has also served as tri-chairs of both our IST and PDEV committees. This will also be my last board meeting, so I would like to thank the Board of Trustees for welcoming me during my time here. Thank you to Chancellor Gerhard for the meetings that we had over the years, is very appreciated. And most importantly, I would like to thank my classified colleagues for trusting me with your voices. You believed in me when I didn't believe in myself, and I hope that I did you justice. Thank you. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. And on to our district, Chastity, welcome.
Hello. Just a brief update, the District Office Senate has submitted a request to the statewide California Community Colleges Classified Senate, 4CS, to be recognized as a certified local senate. Certified local senate status includes voting responsibilities and the right to have our individual members run for elected offices at the state level within the 4CS. Our request will be presented at the 4CS Board of Directors Meeting in September. We look forward to being recognized and participating at the state level soon. Locally, we're gearing up to begin regular senate meetings, where we will establish annual goals and reaffirm our participation in the district-wide shared governance meeting structure. We're hoping the district office administrators will be supportive in allowing our membership to participate in shared governance, including regular senate meetings and activities throughout the year. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to our student senate, Chabot College, Teresa Perdosa.
My report is on District Street, which will happen to be the biggest one we had in a long time. We had a lot of students. On Monday, we had pastries, donuts and muffins, and hot chocolate coffee. The students were very welcoming, and they had something to have before they had their titles. On Tuesday, we had the cafeteria, we had salsa, we had a salsa band, and we had salsa dancing, teaching how to use salsa before the band played. And then we had a lot of pizzas and buffosas and a lot of drinks. And then we had the health center there, they helped the students avoid too stressful for the titles. Wednesday, we had crafts and a lot of different snacks, and we even had the students put flowers together, even instructors were doing it. They had a lot of fun, so it turned out to be okay. Jersey was our biggest one. At the hub, we had karaoke and crafts, and we had so much pizza, I mean tacos, that we had to give them out to the sem center and everything else, but they started coming to us. And then the students, we had a lot of great talent. They even sounded like Frank Sinatra, Dean Martin. We had some country singers singing, we had some rappers, we had some dancing. So I decided we should put on a variety show, because we got all this talent on campus, we should put it through a variety show or a talent show. That's my report.
Thank you. Moving on to our union leadership, our faculty association, Haika.
Yes, thank you. So first of all, part of my report is in regards to the collective bargaining agreement. So since the current contract starts on June 30th, the district leadership and the FA continue to meet on a very rigorous schedule in the new contract negotiations. With the exceptions of a few, almost every article is being addressed on some level. In light of the implementation of the compressed calendar, that starts, that starts Fall 2026, negotiations also must include numerous recalculations regarding course loads, evaluation timelines, and forms to be updated. Language in just about every article must be reviewed and developed. Just to kind of give you an idea, just for the evaluation forms alone, we're looking Just to kind of give you an idea, just for the evaluation forms alone, we're looking at at least 15 to 20 forms that have to include different language now that we didn't have before. And so because of the heavy volume of materials to be negotiated, various subcommittees have been formed to address individual topics and issues. And the FA appreciates the transparency from the Chancellor's Office and the valuable input of the District Negotiation Team, which is comprised of Vice Chancellor Jennifer Drewley, Vice Chancellor Jonah Nicholas, VP of Academics for Chabot, Sophia Forbes, and Dean of Student Services from Las Bacitas, Joe Gagnon. And every effort will be made to have a new bargaining agreement completed by August 14th on Convocation Day. I know that's a very lofty goal, but we'll try our best. And then in addition, we also got to celebrate the retirement of Dave Fouquet a few weeks ago. And Dave leaves very big shoes to fill, and he was very grateful for the Chancellor Gerhardt and for Vice Chancellor Drewley to be participants in his celebration, and we had a lot of fan, actually. He will be sorely missed. Now, I did tell him he's not allowed to change his phone number, because he will be getting many phone calls from me in the future. So, that's my report.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to, where are we at? Item 8.0, Information and Discussion Items. We have our first readings of new reviewed or revised administrative procedures. Are there any questions or comments from trustees? Seeing none, I'll move on to item 8.3, First Reader of New Reviewed or Revised Board Policies. Any comments or questions from trustees on those? All right, seeing none, I will move on to item 9.0, Other Action Items. 9.1, Second Reading of New Reviewed or Revised Board Policies. A motion would be in order?
So, move.
Second.
We have a first by trustee Jen, a second by trustee Lanza. Any questions on the second readings here? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Student trustee Wei.
Aye.
Student trustee Springborn.
Aye.
Trustee Garcia.
Aye.
Trustee Jen.
Aye.
Trustee Greer.
Aye.
Trustee Heredia.
Aye.
Trustee Lanza.
Aye.
Trustee Mojadidi.
Aye.
And Board President Granger.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Moving on to item 9.2, Adoption of Resolution Number 142425, and Authorization to Submit the Five-Year Construction Plan to the California Community College Chancellor's Office and Request for State Funds for Capital Outlay Projects. A motion would be in order?
I'll make a motion.
We have a first by trustee Greer, a second by trustee Mojadidi. Do we have any questions or comments from trustees? Trustee Jen.
I'd just like to say the five-year plan is excellent. I mean, it's doable. I look forward to perhaps another bond measure at some point, so we can make that happen.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Student trustee Wei.
Aye.
Student trustee Springborn.
Aye.
Trustee Garcia.
Aye.
Trustee Jen.
Aye.
Trustee Greer.
Aye.
Trustee Heredia.
Aye.
Trustee Lanza.
Aye.
Trustee Mojadidi.
Aye.
Board President Granger.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to item 9.3, Adoption of Resolution Number 152425, Appropriation Limits for 2526. Motion would be in order for this action item?
So, move.
I'll second.
Trustee, first by trustee Lanza, second by trustee Heredia. Do we have any questions or comments from the trustees on this item?
Must have been very exciting to prepare that, thank you.
Seeing none, roll call, please.
Student trustee Wei.
Aye.
Student trustee Springborn.
Aye.
Trustee Garcia.
Aye.
Trustee Jen.
Aye.
Trustee Greer.
Aye.
Trustee Heredia.
Aye.
Trustee Lanza.
Aye.
Trustee Mojadidi.
Aye.
And Board President Granger.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to item 9.4, Adoption of Resolution Number 162425, Formerly Recognizing June 25, 2025 as LGBTQ+ Pride Month. A motion would be in order?
I'll move.
And I'll second.
We have a first by trustee Mojadidi, a second by trustee Greer. Do we have any comments or questions from trustees on this item?
I'd like to make a comment, and if we could, I don't know if we could pull up the resolution, but this resolution is to recognize June as LGBTQ+ Pride Month, and I, gosh, there's so much to say. It is heartbreaking to see the way that our LGBTQ+ communities are being demonized and villainized in all segments of life, whether it's in education or outside. And I'll just sort of share as an LGBTQ+ member of this board that, you know, the first safe place that I ever felt in my identity as a gay person, as an LGBTQ person, as a queer person, was on a college campus. The first person that I came out to was my advisor. And so, our work in our district, on our colleges, like we make such profound differences in the lives of the students, we, for so many of them, we are the first place where they come out, where they feel accepted, and where they find home, and where they find belonging. And I'm not a fortune teller, but this year, this is the third time, I think, we've introduced this resolution, and I have high hopes that it will pass 7-0 this year. And that is not insignificant for those that have been around. And even though there is so much hate towards our LGBTQ+ community, I know that this district, at all levels, the board, our chancellor, our college presidents, our different leadership groups, our advisors, I know that we are committed to ensuring that all of our students feel safe and belong on campus. And so, I'll turn it over if there's any other comments, but.
Other comments?
Hard to follow.
Yes, okay. With that, roll call, please.
Student trustee Wei.
Aye.
Student trustee Springborn.
Aye.
Trustee Garcia.
Absolutely, aye.
Trustee Jen.
Aye.
Trustee Greer. Trustee Heredia.
Aye.
Trustee Lanza.
Aye.
Trustee Mojadidi.
Aye.
And Board President Granger.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item 9.5, Adoption of Resolution Number 172425, Reaffirming Sanctuary Campus Status and Commitment to Student Protection, Equity, and Access. A motion would be in order?
So, move.
Second.
We have a first by trustee Jen, a second by trustee Heredia. Are there any questions or comments from trustees?
I have a comment.
Trustee Heredia.
I'm very heartened that we're following this resolution in view of all the, what we're seeing in our communities and our nation. And really want to commend us for supporting our students.
Any other trustees?
Michael Dinstaff. Pulling out one line on it, protecting the rights and dignity of all students regardless of immigration status through fourth policy administrative protocols and campus resources. How do we not? Hundred percent.
Okay, seeing no other questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Student trustee Wei.
Aye.
Student trustee Springborn.
Aye.
Trustee Garcia.
Aye.
Trustee Jen.
Aye.
Trustee Greer.
Aye.
Trustee Heredia.
Aye.
Trustee Lanza.
Aye.
Trustee Mojadidi.
Aye.
And Board President Granger.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to item 9.6, Adoption of Resolution Number 182425, Support of the Bay Area Community Colleges Mutual Support Compact to Advance Student Success, Academic Excellence, and Workforce Opportunity. A motion would be in order?
So, move.
Second.
We have a first by trustee Jen, a second by trustee Heredia. Any questions or comments from trustees on this item?
Question?
Trustee Jen.
It says Bay Area Community Colleges, could, does that extend beyond the Bay Area, or do we need to use Bay Area?
We're starting with the Bay 10.
Okay.
So, it could expand beyond at a later time, but right now, we're trying to organize ourselves as a region.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a comment.
Trustee Heredia.
I am heartened to see this resolution before us in acknowledging and supporting what is our trust and our appropriate duty.
Thank you. Okay, roll call, please.
Student trustee Wei.
Aye.
Student trustee Springborn.
Aye.
Trustee Garcia.
Aye.
Trustee Jen.
Aye.
Trustee Greer.
Aye.
Trustee Heredia.
Aye.
Trustee Lanza.
Aye.
Trustee Mojadidi.
Aye.
And Board President Granger.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to item 10.0, Reports from Our Senior Leadership. 10.1, Our President's Report. Let's start with President Foster.
Thank you, President Granger and Board Members. I first just want to just acknowledge the steadfast leadership of our board. Just want to thank you for your support. I think even by example, the resolutions that were passed tonight really send a strong message to our students and to our employees and to our community about the leadership that we have in our district. And so, I just wanted to personally thank you for your leadership, ongoing leadership throughout the year. But tonight was special in terms of the messages that that sent to our community. So, thank you. As we celebrate the end of a successful academic year, I'd like to take a moment to, again, thank the board, thank Chancellor Gerhardt, the Vice Chancellors for attending our 35th commencement ceremony this year at LPC. I'd like to acknowledge our entire planning team, led by Dr. Jeannie Wilson, our VP of Student Services, and our Senior Administrative Assistant for Student Services, Yvette Nahinu, for executing a wonderful celebration, or I should say celebrations, since we had two ceremonies. And there are so many volunteers and departments that really played a critical role. I do want to, in particular, call out and acknowledge the classified professionals from IT, MNO, the President's Office, Campus Safety, Student Life. We had a number of colleagues from the District Office that also came out to support our ceremony. So, I just want to give praise and recognition for everyone who helped make this year's celebration a success. Happy Summer, everyone, and that concludes my report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, we'll move on to Chabot College and President Cooks.
All right, thank you. Good evening, President Granger and trustees. Happy Pride Month and Happy Juneteenth to everyone. Very excited about our new hires. Dr. Luis Escobar, our Vice President of Student Services, he will start officially next week. Amanda Isa, our Dean of Academic Pathways and Student Success. And welcome, Thomas, for being the incoming Classified Senate President. Looking forward to working with you. And also, congratulations to all the classified. The Classified Appreciation Week that you all did last week was well-attended. People spoke very highly about the activities and everything, so. Despite when we did the lunch, the, you know, music, games, a little bit of fun, food is always helpful. So, that was a great time. And thank you to Virginia, being in the president role, being able to work with you for the last couple of years, our conversations, and both of us moving forward, trying to do what we need to do for Chabot. So, thank you, appreciate it. Also, in terms of, we had many student highlights. We had a scholarship luncheon where we awarded, gave awards to over 500 students and close to $100,000 in scholarships. That was a great event on campus. We also had, if I counted correctly, 28 celebrations by our affinity groups and our departments and programs from across campus. And that was kind of the capstone with, that was our college commencement, that was on May 31st. And to say thank you to the trustees for coming and participating, the district participation, the Vice Chancellors and the District Office, to the campus for the planning, and also for Dale just being a great MC. There you go, there you go, there you go. He likes when I shout him out. So, and also campus safety and also MNO. So, and then finally, as you could see from the report tonight by Dio, Chabot, we're in the community. We're in the community, we're on social media, we're trying to get the word out about the great work that we're doing on campus. Most notably, I was a keynote speaker at Leadership San Leandro for last week, last Thursday, for Chabot, and then this week, Monday, for the keynote for the Hayward Rotary as well. And I think, I don't always have an opportunity to share, but I have a team behind me as well that includes Dr. Forbes, who's always very, very supportive, and kind of a thought partner, Yvonne Craig with our advancement and our foundation, and we're continuing to find ways to integrate that into the different talks. The President's Office, Kirti actually did a PowerPoint, put together a PowerPoint over the weekend that I used for the Hayward Rotary, and I really appreciate the work from the President's Office. And then finally, Adalina, did she walk out? I was giving her props. I was leaving her last. I can give them to U-Chip? No, no, Jen, no, I'm gonna give them to Adalina, because Adalina works tirelessly, not only on the CRM and the advisor recruit, she does that, she makes takes the lead on the reels, and she makes the President's Office and also Chabot look good in everything that she does. So, I wanted to be able to publicly give her flowers as well. So, with that, that ends my report.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 10.2, Chancellor.
Yes, just so quickly, a report. As we navigate through the month of June, we have the privilege of celebrating two significant observances, of course, LGBTQ+ Pride Month and Juneteenth. Pride Month is our time to honor and celebrate the diverse identities and experiences within our LGBT community, a month dedicated to recognizing the struggles, achievements, and our ongoing efforts towards equality and inclusion. And of course, this Thursday, we celebrate Juneteenth, a historic day commemorating the emancipation of enslaved African-Americans in the United States, and serves as a powerful reminder of the enduring fight for freedom, justice, and equality, and probably so, more importantly, today. So, I'm proud to serve in a district that recognizes and uplifts these important celebrations and holds DEIA not just as value statements, but as principles that we live by every single day. And that concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Do you have any recognitions tonight?
Yeah, a few. Really, first and foremost, it seems like perhaps a heck of a lot longer than three weeks, but really recognizing our presidents and the teams behind them for putting on such wonderful graduations. It hasn't been a month yet, but it kind of feels like an eternity. But it was truly wonderful, and, you know, as we all know, it's what we're here for, to celebrate and recognize our students. Thanks for your teams and the countless hours that really go in behind the planning and putting on those events. Next, I'd like to really recognize Virginia as outgoing Classified Senate President at Chabot. Virginia, I've always found you to be extremely thoughtful, constructive, and certainly committed to really serving your membership and our employees of classified professionals. You've helped elevate their voices and ensuring perspectives, and contributions are not only heard, but valued and taken into consideration. So, thank you for your leadership role, and you will be missed. And then last but not least, I couldn't go on without saying it. On this evening's agenda item, 8.1, I believe, Separations, there's a gentleman on there who is really leaving us after, I think, 36 years? He's nodding his head. 36 years, and that, of course, is.
36.125.
And of course.
I'll be here till August.
That's his stern calculation. And Jonah mentioned it earlier, Dale's journey not only began, Dale's journey began long before his professional career, of course, as he tells the story as a child playing on the campus while his father served and worked before him. In many ways, he was destined to serve in this, at this college because of that. You had no option. That early bond grew into a lifetime commitment as a beloved faculty member, respected leader, and of course, thoughtful administrator. And throughout Dale's career, he's dedicated, proven his dedication to students, his colleagues, and the mission of Chabot has never been wavered. He's brought to every role that he's served in a deep sense of integrity, professionalism, and care. And most recently, as Vice President of Administrative Services, Dale has provided. And most recently, as Vice President of Administrative Services, Dale has provided steady and trusted leadership through times of challenge and change, and his stewardship ensured that Chabot remained sound and institutionally strong. He's in more than one way, more than just a steward of resources, Dale is a true partner in advancing our collective mission, always seeking ways to improve services and strengthen support for students in the institutional like. And of course, no tribute to Dale would be complete without a nod to his signature wit, sometimes dry, but signature wit, and colorful expressions. One of my personal favorites is catching comes before hanging, meaning that he's kind of wily in ways to get things done, very creative. And so, I think Dale, we appreciate you, we appreciate your 36 years. You will be missed in many ways. And again, congratulations to your 36.12 whatever years it is. So, much deserved. Thank you.
I have something to say next month.
I think there might be some pressure coming with that speech. Okay, item 10.4, trustee report. Let's go to student trustee Wee.
Hello. Can you hear me? Okay, cool. So, I do have quite a bit to go over. So, for starters, in the end of May, we wrapped up a majority of our year of events with multiple special program graduations and celebrations. And on May 1st, we held our annual commencement ceremony where we got to honor all our graduates from this year and from the spring semester. And then with all the current events that have been affecting our communities, I did want to bring attention to an event that we had back in May. Chabot held a Power of Us Unity Rally where dozens of students and staff gathered to speak on the political climate change, share personal stories, and discuss the importance of solidarity, unity, and love. I myself was given the great opportunity to speak, where I spoke about the importance of our collective strength, our power we use to overcome obstacles, and not to give in to injustice. And it was during this time of unity where we were reminded about how lucky I am to truly go to a school that puts the students first. I wanted to take this moment also to appreciate all of you guys for standing up for our students, and thank you for our leaders, our college presidents, our trustees, our board members, our overall community, and for so many more for continuing to fight for us. As a student, we could not put in towards how valuable it is for us to know that our district is on our side fighting alongside us, and we want to thank you for it, and we want to thank you for allowing us to speak our minds during these difficult times, and also for prioritizing our safety, especially through our identities, backgrounds, and incredibly reassuring to open our emails and see that even our chancellor is on our side with our school board, and reminding us that as a student, we're not alone. As a school, we're working with the Dream Center, Student Services, legal aid organizations, community allies, and more to ensure that students are taken care of, and that is exactly what all schools should be doing. And I definitely wanted to thank all of you for it. It is definitely reassuring to know that I am where I belong with you guys. In June, continuing with the theme of student support, June being Pride Month, I'm so proud to say, Chabot College has been an inclusive environment for many opportunities, such as our lavender graduation, our GSA Club, and even events such as a fashion show and prom, which was put on by our clubs themselves. Our school has had insurance that students could be celebrated in their own identities, and we continue to both celebrate them during and all around the school year. Tomorrow, also, there will be, I believe there will be an event to celebrate Juneteenth, which is an incredible opportunity. It's also really nice to see that even during summertime, there are students who can go to events that support them, separate their culture, and really just support, you know, who we are. This month, many summer classes have started with many different classes and even other opportunities being given to the community. Enrollment has been continuing as students are able to take the time they need to complete courses and earn credits that they need for their degree. I did want to share a kind of a personal goal that I was having. A goal that I wanted to currently try and pursue is to gather some data and statistics about student success and what contributes to helping students maximize their college experience. Having data such as our graduation rates, number of degrees and certificates awarded, the number of enrollment during different semesters, the number of students involved in clubs and extracurriculars, the number of students being serviced by your special programs, the students receiving counseling, and so many other categories are extremely beneficial in understanding the contributing factors to help our students achieve their academic and personal goals. And this is what brings things, this helps us to see what we need to focus on or eliminate as a whole. And using these numbers, I hope to bring it back to you all to tell, to kind of share my results with you in the future, and then along with our student, faculty, and Classified Senate, where I hope to work together to continue to advocate for the special things that, these things that we need for the success of our students. And with the uncertainties, of course, of the Department of Education, we want to continue to advocate for our special programs on campus, as they have been a huge part in building community and aiding students with specific and personalized benefits. I myself am a student involved in the special programs at Chabot and can speak for so many students when I say that. These types of programs such as Puente, Amoja, Movement, Nigens Unite, and so many more are essential for us as they allow us spaces we can feel valued, but also having enough resources where we can be accommodated to. And then our Student Senate, on May 12th, our new group of students were recently sworn in. Last week, we had our first summer meeting where we focused on team-building exercises, which helped us to analyze our leadership styles and comprise a list of goals we wanted to achieve throughout the next year. These goals included structuring a summer schedule for regular meeting times, planning summer retreats, and talking about upcoming meetings with the goals we have and how we want to focus that as a collective. We are in the process of discussing a website, we're discussing our website, and of course, updating alternative ways to keep students updated on campus life, possibly through Canvas or other alternatives to be a low-cost way to inform students about student activity, events, resources, and quickly give announcements. This Saturday, our Senate will be having our summer retreat, where we will be at the Freedom Farm doing community service and team-building exercises to help our students get more comfortable with the new roles they've taken on. Our goals throughout the summer will be to learn about our leadership styles and our preferred tasks in the future, so we can know better how to delegate tasks and responsibilities to see which students would thrive in certain topics according to our personal interests and passions. This will help us to know the types of causes to focus on and advocate for. And we also want to learn about the specific things that our student senators want to change and improve, so that throughout the year, we can have different goals to pursue while working in group causes and responsibilities. And then later in the summer, we plan to work on small activities and agendas for the first day of school for the fall semester. That way, we can ensure students who are coming to campus can make sure they find the resources needed, making them feel welcomed and comfortable to get involved. We're trying to understand how we can use our budgets to minimize costs and spend money on things that are logical, but also maximizing the impact such as swag, food, school supplies, resources, and other marketing materials. And then we also aim to discuss ways that our summer students can access the same resources and make sure that everything is available from during the fall and spring semester for the summer students as well, ensuring that all students are supported during their summer classes.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Student trustee Springborn.
Good evening, everyone. Happy Pride Month, happy Juneteenth, and happy belated Father's Day. I think some of you are fathers. Last precedes commencement happened at the end of May, and it was great. I saw all of you there. I was volunteering. I don't know if you guys saw me, but I was there helping out. I missed the first one, but I sat in the second one, and it was amazing. I'd just like to thank, I don't, MNO in general for helping us set up. My student government, who set up Grad Central, which is like where the graduates could mingle and have food. It was great. It was really hot, but it was great. Summer classes are now in swing. I'm just really grateful for the flexibility that we as students have in order to take like asynchronous classes or in-person classes in the summer, depending on, you know, whether people have summer plans or not. I know I have, I'm taking a couple of summer classes, and it's even like heartening to see like when I go to campus, how many students are still there in the summer. The parking lots are still pretty full. The Summer Musical is also going on. If you guys want to see it, it is going on July 18th to 26th, and I have friends in it. It's the Wizard of Oz. And it's also just nice to see our outdoor amphitheater being used. I just really love like our extracurriculars and like, I don't know, activities that students can participate in, like our musical. I also want to echo trustee Wee's gratefulness about the affirmation that our campus is like a sanctuary for student protection. I got the email at work, and I was just like, like I had no doubt, but I was also just like, wow, like really grateful to receive that email. And second, I do check my email. Just overall, I'm really excited for the summer semester and for what's to come, you know, after the summer semester walks up, finishes up. So, yeah, good evening. Thank you.
Okay, trustee Greer.
Good evening, thank you. I echo what everyone has said about graduation. It was my first time as a trustee going through graduation, and, you know, I'm fortunate enough that I put on a robe and just show up, and so I recognize all that goes into that. And I think my favorite part of both graduations is the students. We had four excellent student speakers among the four ceremonies. We had a choir at LPC singing the Star Spangled Banner. We had an individual student sing at Chabot, and it's just, it really makes the event really special. And so, it was those things, and I think specifically about the Chabot graduation, where I think a mother and two daughters all graduated together, and to really see the community and community college really in that, those kinds of celebrations. And then also, in terms of social media, it felt like Chabot celebrated graduation for at least two weeks after. Every day, I was seeing posts on Instagram, and it's just a great celebration. They were pictures shared by families of the graduation. So, it was really exciting, and I thank everyone, because I know that's a super-heavy lift. And all we see is sort of ceremony, but there's so much that goes into that. So, thank you all, and it was a great, I look forward to next year. I'm ready. So, thank you.
Trustee Mojedidi.
I want to just, again, say happy Pride Month and happy Juneteenth, and just sort of, you know, start by, you know, thinking Vice President Wagner, who, you know, I don't know that we've ever had a full conversation other than when I first got on the board, I thought like, is this a Secret Service member? Because like, you just like, you have the energy of being like, just like, you know, a steady constant, stealth in the back of the room, just like a, you know, steady constant. So, just appreciate you and your leadership. And for Virginia Criswell, like, you know, just thank you for your service, and you have been just such a thoughtful and deliberative partner these past few years, and I'm really going to miss having you, like, seeing you regularly, and I just, you know, I want to let you know, like, I have just so appreciated your leadership and what you bring into this space, and, you know, wishing you the best in your next endeavors. And, you know, as I, the theme for me tonight, and I want to steal, you do the theme thing, so I won't talk too much about it. President Granger does the theme thing, but like, I'm just so grateful for our staff, our faculty, our administrators, like, it's not an easy time working in education or higher education, because for those of us, I know every one of us in this room that's a staff member or a faculty member, we care so much about our students' success. It's why we're in this field, it's why the trustee, it's why we're here. And it isn't always easy to see the attacks on our students or the services that we provide them, and I'm just, you know, so heartened that we have such a dedicated college district, like we have truly like, you know, and I'm biased, but like I think we have the best staff that are so dedicated that day in and day out, no matter what the subject matter area is, whether it's like finance and budget and numbers, or like marketing and like, you know, strategic communications, or the student experience, like we're so intentional about the work we do, and it just, it makes our job as trustees so easy to just, to see that heart and that passion come through, and like, you know, you know, joy is also an emotion that we can experience during, you know, difficult times, and so I just, I want to really lean into that joy and gratitude, because, you know, this is going to be the long haul, and, yeah, I hope I didn't cut too much into your theme.
Trustee Jen.
Thank you, President Granger. Excellent meeting. We cover a lot. Let me begin by saying, Vice President Wagner, I never see you at this board meeting because there's always a podium between me and you. So, I'm going to stand up and say, yes, there you are. Because you always tend to pick the same seat, and I'm always around here, so we don't see each other. You certainly will, you are a legacy. You know, the Wagner name has been part of Chabot College for probably, if I'm not mistaken, at least five decades. Would that be about correct? Including your father? Yeah. So, you are a legacy for Chabot College, and you will be missed, and there'll be other opportunities where we can continue to roast you between now and August 15th. But congratulations on your retirement. I was going to pull that out, pull that from the consent calendar and let you sweat a little bit, but decided no one was backing me up, so I didn't do that. I'd like to thank the two presidents for hosting us. You were one of our hostess, host at our commencement. Programs went well. This is one program I look forward to every year. I still get chills every time I hear that theme, graduation, that commencement theme. Just chills running up my spine each time, so. The Virginia Criswell, we're going to miss you. We're going to miss you. I mean, I've been seeing you at that seat for many, many, for at least more than a year. In some role, one or another, you've been part of our team, so thank you for your service. We will miss you. I will miss seeing you there. Have a great summer. Can't believe, and many of you will probably start off going on some trips very soon. Have a great time, drive safe, and we'll see you back during the fall. Some of you next month for board meetings. Okay, thank you.
Trustee Heredia.
I don't have a specific report on all the things that I wanted to say. We said, I echo that. Thank you for all the reports. Thank you for all the support to our students, faculty, staff, and administrators. It's a great district to be in, and they support each other and help each other, and have a great rest of the summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Lanza.
Few comments. First, to start with how proud I am of the unanimous votes on our proclamations today. Very important things, very important to make sure everyone knows where we stand on these critical issues as we look forward to it. Also, I wanted to share how, the incredible feeling I had when I did the math of the thousands of lives that were changed in the graduations. Not the event itself, of course, but just the fact that thousands of people's lives are different post that date than before that date, and it's something for us all to reflect on. And then, today, I want to pull out the Student Services groups. So, buried in all of the math that we just went through was the incredible success on helping us get closer on the Hold Harmless, which we've all, you know, can cite the number of students we need to get to, but the fact that those are the number of students we need now is because of incredible work from the Student Services Group, from financial aid, from counseling, from registration, from the CRM advice. All of that hard work we looked at probably two years ago, getting started, and the momentum you have from that hard work and the success, and then think about it relative to the harmless. But now, then pause and think of how many people's success is going to be so much better? How many people are going to have more money available for them to stay in school and get that success, which is the whole purpose of it? And it was incredible, the progress. So, thank you. And couldn't go without a final comment for D O and team. I don't think I would have thought about Twitch or Hulu. Fantastic job, and I also liked the class schedule. So, there we go. Thank you.
Trustee Garcia.
So, I guess just my appreciation, especially to our presidents and to all your teams for the beautiful work that you did to put together such well-orchestrated, touching graduation ceremonies, both the big ones as well as the multitude of affinity group ones. I was truly impressed by both of your interactions that showed kind of the connection that you had, knowing many of your students by first name, and so that just really kind of filled me, and I think it speaks to the kind of work that you do to build those kinds of cultures amongst our staff. So, thank you. Thank you to all our staff as well for all your energies. Appreciation to Ms. Criswell and to Vice President Wagner. Have not had a chance to work as much with you, but I know that you have left, you've left a deep impact on the work that we've done within our district. And I, lastly, just want to share the commendation to all of us coming together around the reaffirmation of our various resolutions today, both around our LGBTQ plus community as well as our immigrant communities, because we are creating that space amongst ourselves. communities. Because we are creating that space amongst ourselves, no matter what's happening around us, this is the space where it's safe. And we're lifting up our communities wherever they're coming from. And that takes courage. So, thank you. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. Okay, so, wasn't, I was torn on a theme for tonight. So, there, two things come to mind for me when I think about what we heard tonight, and that is both dedication and gratitude. When I think about our graduations, it is incredibly moving. I echo the comments about the student speakers and really them talking about the impact that classified professionals, faculty members, administration have had on their experience on the college campuses. And when we go through the part of the ceremony where students are asked to stand if certain, during certain times, if this is you, is so incredibly moving. And students meet those criteria because of the dedication of the people on our college campuses. So it is so powerful every year to see that. And when I look through some of the things on our agenda tonight, talk about dedication, right? Look at the dual enrollment agreements that we approved tonight. Look at the contracts with Etsy that we approved tonight, approved tonight. Look at the signal that we have to remember how much our community supports our district through the bond that they approved for our district and all of the equipment and all of the projects that are happening because we have those bond funds. It is amazing to me. And, you know, the gratitude I have for the work you've done when we look at the changes that are coming, Virginia, I so appreciate what you have brought to the table here. And I can't believe your time has come and you are leaving us. But I also recognize that you will continue to lead even though you're not sitting at this dais. And Dale, I just want to say congratulations on making that decision to, to, to join the other side. And I know you will enjoy your retirement. So, with that, we will move on to item 11.0, adjournment, a motion with an order.
To adjourn.
Second.
We have a first by trustee Heredia, a second by trustee Jen. Without objection, a meeting is adjourned.